Welcome to the Janesville League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for the Janesville School Board Election, presented in cooperation with JATV. My name is Eileen Newcomer and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Janesville, and I'll be the moderator for tonight's forum. The All Volunteer Local League of Women Voters of Janesville is a nonpartisan organization which works to register voters, host candidate forums, study local, state, and national issues, and to bring informative programs to the citizens of Janesville and Northern Rock County. You can visit our website, www.lwvjvl.org, or follow us on Facebook to stay informed and get involved. Looking for more information about the candidates on your ballot? The League has published our voter guide online at vote411.org. Visit the site to find information about the candidates running for state and local office, including city council, school board, and judicial offices. Candidate responses are published in their own words, and voters can compare their responses side by side while researching what's on the ballot. As always, the League does not support or oppose any candidates or parties, and strives to provide accurate and unbiased voting information consistent with our mission, empowering voters defending democracy. Now let's turn to the rules for tonight's forum. All candidates have been invited to participate, and those in attendance will be given equal time to address the audience. Each candidate will receive two minutes for an opening statement, two minutes to answer each question, and two minutes for a closing statement. Questions for the candidates will be coming from the audience. Candidates have not received the questions in advance, and they will take turns being the first to answer the questions. We will do our best to cover as many topics and to get to as many questions as possible during tonight's program. If we do not get to your question, we invite you to continue the conversation with the candidates to get your questions answered. For those in attendance at the library, if you wish to submit a question to the candidates, please write your question on the index card provided. Raise your hand, and one of the League members will collect your question and post your question in the chat for the moderator. Now time to meet the six candidates. I'm going to name them all off in alphabetical order. And just a reminder, they are all running for three open seats on Janesville School Board, and the election will be held on Tuesday, April 1st. So again, in alphabetical order, Michelle Hayward, Veronica Hereford, Cory James, Tyra Johnson, Colton Measner, and Julie Richardson. And thank you to the three candidates that we have joining us today. All right, that was quick. Now let's dive into the heart of our program tonight and the questions that we have. So our first question is, what is your vision? Oh, I'm sorry, we need to do opening statements. Okay, let's jump back, pretend I didn't do that. Time for opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes to give their opening statement, and we are going to begin with Michelle.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Hayward. Thank you for having this forum for us, and as you do every year. I'm a mom of three. I've had, all three of them have gone through the district, and I've got two graduates, and then I have one still in eighth grade here in town. I was always involved in PTO, PTA ever since the kids were in school. And it's when I was tapped, you know, by someone to consider running for school board, I didn't really know what I was getting into, but I did some research. When I got on the board at first in 2016, so this will be my fourth term if I'm reelected, it was an adjustment. I come from the private sector, business, Granger, now Stoughton Trailers. And so it was quite an adjustment and learning. And so what I absorbed a lot that first year, but now I feel like I've really been able to contribute, and it's been a pleasure and a... It's been enlightening to be part of the district that is shaping my kids and forming their education. I get to know a little bit of the behind-the-scenes things, of the opportunities that they have that I really wouldn't have had not being involved in the school board, because we need to do better about communication. But just getting to help formulate the policies and be involved in that is, it's a gift and it's something I enjoy doing, and I'm proud to do and happy to do. So I guess I would say I will always, I always approach all the topics. I do my research, I approach them all with thoughtfulness, and I don't ever come to the meeting and not, you know, have done my research, I send my questions ahead of time. So you can count on me to always take many inputs, listen, and be open-minded in the decisions that we have to make on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Now we'll move to Colton.
Good evening, my name is Colton Measner. I graduated from Janesville Craig two years ago. I've been a lifelong district resident. I have two brothers, one is a junior at Janesville Craig and one graduated last year. I'm really heavily involved in the community and I'm invested in the community. Having a strong district means having a strong community. I sit on my church council at First Lutheran Church. I'm on the Janesville Youth Baseball and Softball Board along with Janesville Youth Football Board. So I like to see success, and starting with our school district is where I would like to see continued success. I want to continue to remain accountable for everybody and hold everybody accountable. Sorry, I lost what I was just about to say. That is key things about me. I think the biggest thing for me is I bet what would the board benefit from me the most would be my perspective, and I think that is key. And I want board members to care enough, and I see who I'm in this forum with right now, and I see us three care enough. We've been at every event, and we continue to be open-minded on anything and everything and answer any question we can, and I think that's exactly what the board needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Colton. Julie, your opening statement.
Hi, thanks for having us. My name is Julie Richardson. I am a mother of two recent graduates from the school district of Janesville. I am a longtime Janesville resident, and we're small business owners here in town. I'm running because I believe that there's a strong community, needs a strong school system. I am a longtime volunteer here in Janesville. I've been on a number of boards. I am also have a history in nonprofits, and before my previous career, I was a case manager for people with developmental, children and adults with developmental disabilities. I am running because I want to improve the outcomes for all Janesville school children, students. I want to advocate for teachers and students, and I want to have transparency throughout the district with the budget, for the student outcomes, and for the safety of the students and the staff. I like to think that I am a collaborative leader. I am a leader who will listen to all sides of a problem, of people's opinions from all sides, and I will lean into expert advice. If I don't know the answer to the question, I'll go find it. And I will be a collaborative leader. And I think that that's something that would be a positive attribute to the school district of Janesville, to the school board. So that's why I'm running, and thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, now it is time for the question and answer portion of tonight's forum. As a reminder, you'll each have two minutes to answer each question. I'm going to continue to rotate who starts first. So the first question is coming to you, Colton, to start. And the question is, what is your vision for the future of Janesville School District?
My vision is to continue to see the upward trends we're seeing now. We continue to make good strides and positive movements in our district. I want to continue to provide transparent answers for our community and our district leadership down to our students. I want to continue to enhance safety for our students and staff more than we already have. I want to continue to look and research where all of our referendum money is going to make sure that our taxpayers feel they are being sort of, I guess, looked after when they're paying for the taxes on our referendums, and I want to make sure that their tax dollars are being used correctly. Continue to, again, strive to be a destination district and hold everybody accountable from district leadership to students, and have clear and high expectations.
Thank you. Julie, same question to you.
I also would like to see continued improved outcomes for the students of Janesville, of all students. I want every student graduating from our schools to be college and career-ready. I also want to see students, all of our students, continue to be involved in all the things that Janesville schools have to offer, after-school activities, sports, those types of things. I think that increasing in the participation in those things is great for all students. I also caring for the whole student and the whole student's needs is something I think that the district has been working hard at doing, and we need to continue to do that. It's a tall order, but I want to make sure that we're taking into account the whole student and all of their needs, and doing the best we can to go forward in that direction, as well as the staff. Taking good care of our staff means that they're going to want to stay and continue to have a positive influence on our students. So I think those are the things I would like to focus on, as well as obviously maintaining the budget. I mean, all the things that would be my job as a school board member should focus on those things would be where I would focus, where I would go.
Thank you, Julie. Same question to you, Michelle.
Thank you. My vision for the district is we continue to do a lot of the good things that we've been accomplishing, and then kind of tweak what we need to be doing better. I want us to be a destination district for employers and for employees and families. I want them to come and do their research and see all that we have to offer. We have so many opportunities for getting kids college and career-ready, like youth apprenticeships and Carpenter, the... Crassman of the character, thank you. Yes, thank you. And the Global Business Academy, a lot of different things. And we also have different charter schools that are different ways to meet kids where they are and to educate them, because Parker and Craig don't fit every student that we have. I want us to be hungry to keep getting better and keep, what can we learn from other districts? You know, what are those best-in-class practices that we can implement? I want us to have a strong mentally healthy district as well, where we're building each other up and we're bringing each other along, and then we're just, we keep driving towards success. Thank you.
Thank you. Now time for our next question. What do you see as the top issues facing Janesville School District right now? And what are your ideas to address them? And we will start with Julie.
I think that the top issues, number one is the DPI report card, and I think we're making strides and improving on that. I think we've looked at the curriculum, we've updated the curriculum, or we, the school district has. I think we are headed in the right direction with that. I think we need to continue to make strides in that direction, look at where things aren't going great and make more improvements. I know we need to catch up our middle schoolers in our high schools. It seems like the younger grades are where we're really succeeding the most right now, so we just need to keep at that to improve. The budget is never going to be far from my mind, because it's where we succeed or fail. I think if we don't have a strong management of our budget and we don't have the money coming in that we need, then we're going to have issues. So I think managing that is going to be a big task, especially in some of the uncertain things. We don't know where all of our funding is going to keep coming from, and we also know that the state hasn't been giving us the money we, every school district across the state, needs to educate the kids in Wisconsin. So those are things that I think we need to focus on. And yeah, I think those are the two big things we need to work. I mean, there's always more. There's always room for improvement, and we can always continue to do better. But those are the two big things I think that I would work on focusing right now, to start with.
Thank you, Julie. Same question to you, Michelle.
Sure, she's exactly right. So the two biggest ones are the DPI report card, because that's the biggest conversation point in town, especially when it comes to election time, and then funding. So I'll address the first one first. So the report card is, there's a couple of inputs to it. So obviously the forward exam, the ACT exam, yeah, we aren't doing what we want to do. But it didn't happen overnight, and it's not going to improve overnight. However, there have been great strides made. And if you watch the board meeting from, two board meetings ago, we had a presentation by Dr. DeGraff, who is doing great work ensuring we have updated curriculum. Some of it had not been updated since the 70s. And we're seeing Bridges is our new math curriculum that was incorporated probably four years ago now. Time flies. And I'm telling you, my kids went through it, and it's engaging, and it meets kids. If kids have mastered, if some students have mastered this part of it, but this group hasn't, there's still modules that both groups can be working on separately to learn the skills and master the skills. Likewise, Wonders is also our reading program that we've implemented, probably within two years. And that's also showing great gains. But that meeting, you'll see, we've had growth in every single grade in math and reading. You know, the ACT, the kids just took it. Leading indicators for all of it from that meeting presentation shows that we are going to see growth at the next report out. So again, it didn't happen overnight, it's not going to improve overnight, but the right work is happening, is going on, and they're also sharing best practices. So we always see a dip from fifth grade to sixth grade and eighth grade to freshman year. So the teachers are working together to say, what do I need to do to get my kids ready? To go to sixth grade and to freshman. For the funding, yes, we need to be judicious in spending that referendum money. It was a fraction of what we really needed, but we did prioritize really well. We do need more state funding, so that we're always going to kind of look at that. And insurance is also going up, and we're doing our best to manage that.
Thank you, Michelle. Colton, same question to you.
Sure, so I mean, two of the biggest things they hit on is what I'll hit on, and I'll mention some other things. The DPI report card is always a hot topic, it always will be. But how our district is graded is a snapshot, and in my opinion, it's an unfair assessment of our district, because I see great things going on when I go through schools and whatnot, and we're continuing to make strides. I was at the board meeting a few weeks ago, and we're making strides in our categories that we prioritized. So we're continuing to do better. I also think the Stuart project will help, and we're in negotiations with them, so I actually do believe that the Stuart project will help with that. The budget, it's always going to be a tough thing. I'm young, I have a lot to learn. However, I'm trying to learn that the best I can. But with things happening so fast right now at the state and federal level, we only can control what we can control. And we, you know, continue to prepare for high prices and hope for lower, but be creative and cost-effective. I think the other biggest thing is community and parental involvement in our district. I think that that is a huge lack in our district. And if I look around, if I look in the Madison area, at Verona, or high schools like that, I see that, or districts like that, I see the parents investing into the district, because they realize, what I want to start to get everyone to realize in that having a successful district is having a successful community. And if we get our community and our parents behind our school district, we'll really start to see major changes for the better.
Thank you, Colton. Our next question is, in what ways can the district improve its overall efforts with diversity, equity, and inclusion? And we will start with Michelle.
Oh, you guys are the first ones to ask this question this time around. You know, I will be honest, and say I don't see that we have issues with that right now. What I will say is, I mean, I've participated and attended Craig's events around, you know, celebrating different backgrounds and that. So honestly, I think we offer a lot of opportunities for the students to kind of create their own opportunities, and the teachers lead them. I would not say from a student opportunity that we have a lack of anything there. I know we are, if it comes to socioeconomic kind of a status, we are focusing on the lower 25 percentile. Obviously, that's another part of the report card. We are focusing resources there, not only referendum funding, but additional resources for that. So I'll be honest, I don't see it as an issue. It's not been brought up in my nine years on the board as something that we're lacking or needing to address with anything.
Thank you, Michelle. Colton, same question to you.
I'd have to agree. As a student, you know, I know what you're sort of talking about. As a board member, again, I have a lot to learn, and it's a good question. You know, I just got to dive into it a little bit more as to a standpoint from a board member as opposed to maybe a student, a staff member or a parent. I think we have a lot of opportunity in our district, and we continue to see that. But I do see great things in those categories. Again, just got to look into it more, but I don't see any problems as of now.
Thank you, Colton. Same question to you, Julie.
Oh dear, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
We do have a diverse population, and I agree with Michelle, and I don't know that it's been a problem. We have a diverse, oh, for goodness sakes, I don't know. Shoot, I'm sorry.
You're okay, Julie, we hear you.
Is this me? It must be, I wonder.
We hear you.
Julie, we can hear you, just so you know. So if you want to keep rolling.
I just texted her too.
I don't know what to do here.
You're okay, you're okay. We hear you, we hear you.
Well, maybe we can put a quick pin in Julie's response while we sort out the technical difficulties. Julie, we will come back to you for this question, so I don't want you to feel like you're missing out on that. The next question is, are there any innovative educational programs that have been implemented in neighboring or peer communities that you would like to see happen in Janesville? And for this question, we will start with Colton.
Honestly, I'm going to keep this pretty short. I'm going to have to look into that and get back to you. That's a good question. I just, I wouldn't know off the top of my head any programs that other districts carry that we wouldn't, that would benefit us more than the programs and opportunities we have as a district, because I know we have many programs and opportunities in our district. I would just have to look and see what programs and opportunities at other districts would be better.
Julie, I see you're back.
I know, sorry.
We'll have you answer maybe both questions back to back. Because we'll have two minutes for each question. As a reminder, the first question is, in what ways can the district improve in its overall efforts with diversity, equity, and inclusion?
We have a diverse population in Janesville, and I think that's a strength. I agree that I don't see that those are big problems in our district at the moment. My children, we've never had an issue, have never said anything about it coming home from school. I don't see that's been an issue. I think my kids actually benefited from having a diverse friend group, a diverse population that they went to school with, and that's, I think, benefits everyone. I agree with Michelle when she said that we do have some socioeconomic challenges in our district. I don't think that's news to anyone, and that's something that we do need to continue to address. And again, those are programs that I know that the district is looking at and has invested in, in making sure that those kids are well cared, as cared for as we can for them. And the second question, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. I'm going to repeat it for you.
Okay, thanks.
No problem. The second question is, are there innovative educational programs that have been implemented in neighboring or peer communities that you would like to see happen in Janesville?
I think one thing that we've done a decent job at and we need to continue doing is looking at the curriculum that other districts that are successful are using. I know the Bridges Math, Bridges Math, and I always want to call it, what's that?
Wonders.
Wonders. I always want to call it rainbows, but it's Wonders Reading. I know those two are...
Reading Rainbow.
Reading Rainbows, right. So I know those two are curriculums that, you know, we look around, and you want to find a proven curriculum that's going to work for students. So I think that's a big thing that we need to continue focusing on for, across the board. I agree that, I'm sure there's programs, could we do, I continue to strive to do better. So yes, I want to keep looking at other districts and see what they're doing that we could be doing differently or better. I think we do offer a lot of great options in Janesville, especially for graduation rates. We have different high schools, like we were talking about earlier, that have, offer a lot of opportunities to get, keep our graduation rate high, and I think that's very important. So I guess I would, kind of like Colton said, I would have to kind of do a little more research as well on that, but I do think that's something as a district we need to look at, is to make sure we're expanding and looking at all the options. Why recreate the wheel if it's working for someone else?
Thank you, Julie. Same question to you, Michelle.
Sure, so I do have a little bit of input on this just from my experience on the board, and you wouldn't know unless you were behind the scenes like this, or if you have watched the meetings, which I'm sure audiences, that nobody, everybody tunes in on Tuesday nights. So Elevate is a perfect example of something that we took from a neighboring district. So I think it was Brookfield or somewhere by Milwaukee. Elevate was a program, and we modeled it here. Now it's Global Business Academy, and both of my graduates went through it, where they got to partner with business leaders and community leaders in Janesville working on a project in groups. So someone was a project manager, someone was a project leader, you know, they had different roles. And they got exposure to different companies, and in those roles, they got to kind of say, oh, I thought I wanted to be this when I graduated, but I don't know, I kind of like this. And they also get a mentor for life. Oakley Ryan was one of my daughter's project mentors. And so now Aubrey can, you know, reach out to Oakley at any time. And Easton went through it as well. So the exposure that they got there, that is a direct learning from a neighboring district. Recently, our administration directors went to a neighboring district and learned about some safety protocols that they have implemented that we can do better in. And then lastly, Avid. This will be the one thing, we already have Avid, and it's essentially a program where it's kind of like an invite-only small group. Last I knew, we only have about 60 kids that we could even have in it at Craig. I don't even think it's at Parker yet. But these students get help studying, and they get help like kind of learning how to write notes and that. My kids went to college, I'm telling you, without, they didn't really know how to study, where Aubrey had to teach herself, so she'd been there renting whiteboards in the UW Lacrosse Library. Milton has it throughout the school, if I'm not mistaken. So that's something I would like to see us, I wish we had more resources to do Avid throughout both high schools, because they all need to learn how to study and take better notes, and just kind of know how to organize themselves to prepare for college.
Thank you. Our next question is, how would you increase public engagement in our schools? And we'll start with you, Julie.
I think we're doing a decent job of that with the business community already. Like Michelle, we talked earlier, the Craftsman, the Care, the Elevate slash Janesville Business Academy. I know we also have introduced recently the Education Academy, I believe it's called. So I think that in that regard, we're doing a good job. So that's, that's good. I think the engaging parents and the community themselves in, in their schools. And, but getting parents and families to invest in their child's education is something that is something we need to work on. How specifically, I don't, I don't know if it's reading and donuts once a month and just to get parents in the door in the school more. If that's the best way to go about that, that's something I think we need to, I, I'm confident that the school district is already researching and we should probably, I, I'll learn, I would like to learn more about that though. But that kind of, those kind of engaging programs. Every grandparent's excited to go to the spring sing or the, you know, the winter, winter sing or whatever. Just getting people in the door to see those things and then asking them to engage more on a regular basis keeps everyone engaged and, and helps people be invested and be proud of the schools that their kids go to. And that's something I think that is important. And I, how specifically we do that is something I would need to work on learning. But I do think there are ways we can do it. Thanks.
Same question to you, Michelle.
Sure. This is a struggle. However, I feel like if you want to know, you're going to find a way to learn it. So I would encourage anybody in the community, you know, check out our social media. Patrick Gasper and team do a great, great job on that. So check out social media. Feel free to email a board member. All of us, I mean, email me anytime. My number's on the website even. If you have a question, I'm, I'm happy to dig into it for you. If I don't know the answer, I'll point you to the right person. I would say, you know, watch the board meetings. They are super captivating. And, you know, become an engaged parent. If you care about your students' education, join PTO, join PTA, get involved. You ask them how their day was. Check, check Infinite Campus. You know, talk, you know, talk to them about that kind of thing because I think it all starts at home. How, how successful your student is, I believe it starts at home. And so get involved and ask. If you care, you will ask. Or find out.
Thank you. Colton, same question to you.
So I had the great opportunity of participating in Elevate myself. And we are really connected with the business world. Where we see our struggle is our, more of our parents and the rest of our community being involved. Getting them to be involved more is something I know the district's actively working on. And when we can figure it out, we're going to implement whatever we need to. But caring enough for your kid's education, watching the boards meeting, more board meeting. I was at the last board meeting and it was me and one other person in that entire board meeting. So if you want to see better things, shoot the, you know, shoot the board members an email, a text, a call. They're going to get back to you and they're going to give you an answer. I, I give you in perspective. I tell you, if the board was making a decision on getting rid of football, the boardroom would be packed out the district front door. But we talk about cutting a part of our education, two, three, four people maybe. So it's just getting them to care just that, just enough as they do about athletics as education. Because if they care just as much as they do about athletics in this city, about our education in this city, we'd see night and day changes.
Thank you, Colton. The next question is, what is your opinion of Wisconsin's school choice program? And we'll start with you, Michelle.
Sure, thank you. So I am a firm believer that you have options of where you're going to send your child. And luckily, Janesville has a lot of options. So we have our normal run of the mill, you know, run of the mill schools, Parker, Craig, all the regular high, middle schools. But we also have Arise, Rock River Charter, and Rock University that offers students options and how they want to learn. Does your child learn best online? Maybe, you know, maybe Parker and Craig and, and the middle schools aren't a great fit. They could learn online and take classes. Rock University is fantastic. They come out with an associate's degree as well as a high school diploma. Rock River Charter, Rock River Charter, I have seen do incredible things. I have mentored two ladies in the district and one of them graduate, was at Parker, credit deficient as a freshman. Graduated from Rock River Charter a semester early and is now a successful, a young lady in town and I'm super proud of her. So I would say, yeah, that we have so many opportunities. I believe that it should be a school of choice. And I want Janesville to be the choice because we do have a lot of options and I want us to be, I know we're competing against people. I want, and I believe Janesville is the right destination for students to grow.
Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, I'm, I'm on to Colton.
Thank you. So I think you should have the choices to where you go. We are lucky enough to where you have plenty of different options and choices. And I encourage you to figure out and take the time with your parents or whoever you may feel is necessary to figure out what is best for you. Cause as Michelle mentioned, we have plenty of options. As far, I mean, that's as far as I got for that question.
Thank you, Colton. And to you, Julie.
Hi. Yes, I agree that Janesville has great choices. And I, and there's a lot of options to get people to graduate from high, high school. And I have no problem with school choice. Choosing within our district is fine. I have no issues with any of those choices. I do have a very strong problem with school vouchers and money going out of our district to private schools and private private schools. Money, the money needs to stay in the district. And I think that school choice and school vouchers, the wording gets muddled a lot and often people use them as the same and they are not the same thing. So to be clear, I think school choice is great. If Craig's not working out for you, you'd rather go to Parker. You know, Rock River Charter's for you, Arise works better for you, all within our district and the money stays in the district of Janesville. I have no problem with that. I have a very large problem with taxpayer dollars funding private schools outside of our district.
Thank you, Julie. Our next question is, given what's happening at the federal level, what would need to adjust if the US Department of Education closes, especially when it deals with students with special needs?
Is that my question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. That, we are, we're starting with Colton.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat that?
Given what's happening at the federal level, how would the district need to adjust if the US Department of Education closes? And can you please comment on how this would impact students with special needs?
Special education students need sometimes more attention than a normal student would need. And we, we need to be able to meet those needs. As far as what's going on at the federal level, we have no control on that. Us nine board members have no control what they're going to do. So we take it day by day and do what, what we can with what we have. What I do know is with what's going on in the federal level and all these things going on is what's going to tie into that is unfortunately politics and that has no room in the classroom. So we have to just make the best decision we can as a board and realize we have no control over what the federal government's going to do. And when it happens, if it does, then we have to, we just have to do the best we can with what we have.
Thank you. Julie, same question to you.
Children with special needs have a very special place in my heart as I have former case manager for people with developmental disabilities. And I saw a lot of great work in classrooms that, that by special ed teachers. There's a very special place for special ed teachers in heaven. It hurts my heart to, to consider ever cutting budgets for them. I, I just can't. So I guess my answer that I, we don't know what's going to happen with the federal government. And, but one thing I will promise you is if I'm a school district, a school board member, I would fight with my state rep, with my congressman. I would be talking, I would be advocating for the school district of Janesville, for Janesville to, you can't cut our budget. We are, 9% of our budget comes from the state, from the federal government. 9%. If we have to cut that 9%, we lose 62 teachers. That's unacceptable. And that, especially when we as taxpayers pay that money. So that's kind of my, my take on it is that that it, it's just, it's, it's not acceptable as an option. If it happens, we will deal with it. And we will make the decisions that have to be made. But it would not be ideal for anybody, especially the students. And that's frustrating. But what I would promise you is I would, I would be advocating for the district at the state and federal level if cuts are coming. Thanks.
Thank you, Julie. Michelle, same question to you.
You know what, to be honest, I think it's still really, really early and obviously just happened today. And, and we'll have to evolve from today. And I don't know the impact of that for special needs funding specifically. Just in general, I hope that it cascades more funding to the states to distribute. And because that's where about 70% of our funding does come from is the state. So we do need to just give it a little bit more time, see what the impact really ends up being. And then to Julie's point, make decisions as they come. Obviously, I'm always going to focus on the student's achievement. And, and then you know, staff, retaining staff is always important too. And, and make sure we're a destination district for staff and top talent. But I think it's a little bit early. We just need to fully understand the impact and what it means.
Thank you, Michelle. Our next question is, what is the state of civics education in Janesville schools? And are any changes needed? And we will start with Julie.
I know that US government, or I'm sorry, US history is a required class to graduate from high school. And so I happen to know we have some amazing history and social studies teachers in, at both high schools. So I think the state of them is right. They also have to have a personal finance class to graduate, which I think is a great thing. So I think discourse, discourse and conversation and, and teaching our children to be critical thinkers and to how to investigate a, a problem or figure out if, if information that they're receiving is accurate and truthful. I think is something that is being taught. It, it probably needs to be doubled down soon with the way things are on both sides of that right now. But I do think that, that, that is something that is being taught. But everybody, every person in our, in our district should know how the government works and, and civics is, is being taught. And I think, I think it's, they're doing all right. There's maybe, maybe need to work on the, again, the disseminating the information. Cause there's so much of it these days for kids. It's a little overwhelming for all of us, I think, sometimes. So I think that would maybe be something we could work on. But other than that, I do, I do think they're getting a good civics education.
Thank you, Julie. Same question to you, Michelle.
So I think, yeah, we offer a lot of great opportunities. Yes, you know, US history, we have the DC trip to learn about local government. You know, that's to a subset of students that get to go on that trip. And, and there's other class offerings. But if I'm being honest, I, I think it's, again, some of that you, the, the exposure to that also happens at home too. So then you start to kind of pay attention. If you were to ask me when I was in high school, I can promise you I probably wouldn't have known as much as I know now. I think you need, you know, but we educate, we talk about it in our family. You know, so being honoring the country that you live in and knowing what happens in the government and kind of talking about the decisions and how they impact us and elections. My kids go with us. When they're on 18, they go with us to elections and they understand the importance of all of that. So we do what we can at school. I think there's probably more. Not all the kids are taking, you know, all the, you know, all the classes that we offer to, to do that. But I think again, that's, that's another one that should be strengthened at home.
Thank you, Michelle. Same question to you, Colton.
There's always room for improvement, but I can tell you that as a student, I sat in the class with my wonderful social studies teacher. And she taught me how the government should and shouldn't work. She told me, you know, word for word, be careful about what you see on the media. Because it, it isn't always true, one. And two, it's not always how things should be. Like Julie and Michelle had mentioned as well, personal finance and history classes are mandatory to graduate. And just to put it in perspective, in eighth grade, I went on the DC trip through Marshall Middle School. So that was a trip of a lifetime. I went with all my friends. It was, again, a trip of a lifetime. I won't ever forget it. And I think we do a great job at it. Of course, always room for improvement, but I think it's one of our stronger suits in our district.
Thank you. Our next question is, some school districts have made efforts to minimize student distraction and online bullying by restricting access to cell phones while students are in school. What is your perspective on available approaches to help students focus and avoid bullying? And this question starts with Michelle.
Bullying is awful. And I feel like you can, you know, we can't get away from it. I, my personal experiences, it's always been worse in middle school for all of my kids. I think we are being really successful though. The yonder pouches in middle schools are proving to be successful. At first I, I will say, yeah, I was concerned. What if I need to reach my kids? But you don't, I, you, you know, I know how I can reach my kids if I need to. So it's been actually really well adapted into our middle schools for longer than our high schools, which just recently adopted it. And if you talk to high school teachers, they'll say the students are more focused. And, cause that is bullying. So I'm kind of trying to, the whole policy in general, it isn't, isn't just addressing bullying. It's, it's addressing paying attention and being engaged in the classroom versus, you know, just scrolling on their phone. So I have heard great things from, from the both high school teachers that that's really a successful implementation. And the kids, you know, the kids aren't pushing back on it. They're, they're doing it. And so I think it's been a very positive implementation in our district.
Thank you, Michelle. We will go to Colton next.
Bullying is awful. It's one of the worst things that plays a part in our education system. And I will tell you that there, you know, as a board member, I will be prioritizing. There's no room for that in our district. And we will continue to hold those kids accountable to the highest level. As far as the phone policy goes, I mean, my brother's a junior right now. And when that first got implemented, he's like, teachers are getting strict, blah, blah, blah. But that's what we need. You know why? Because I guarantee you, when we see our ACT scores and we see our future DPI report card, our scores are going to be up. And you know why? Because the social media and the technology are, is one of the biggest distractions, but it has, I will say, it has enhanced and advanced our learning and our learning spaces. But it is a key distraction in the learning environment. So we just have to figure out our happy medium. I think we're figuring that out really well right now. As Michelle said, you know, teachers are liking this. Administration are liking this. Students are starting to come in line with this. And I, you know, I don't like to guarantee anything, but pretty close to a guarantee that we will see significant changes in our scores future down the road with this policy in place.
Thank you, Colton. Same question to you, Julie.
I think, again, we've addressed the yonder pouches are great at the middle school. I think the, the new high school policy is, is great. I wish they would have done it sooner. And I know a lot of teachers have said, just the time, they only get 42 minutes, I want to say, per class period. And they were spending too many of those minutes, precious minutes with their students, trying to get them to put their phones down. So now that it's just kind of a policy across the board, I think we're getting more, they're getting more time to teach. And I think that's important. And it's going to be successful. I believe Colton's correct. I think we will see some improvements in scores across the board. And happier teachers because they're getting the opportunity to teach. As far as the bullying is concerned, bullying is awful. It is, I agree with Michelle, middle school kind of stinks in general sometimes. So and the biggest part of the problem is you and I are, except for the exception of Colton, everyone on this call, we could go home and close the door and get away from it. And we, they can't now because it's on their phones and it's in their bedrooms. It comes home with them. It's, it's everywhere with them. And that's a big problem. So I think the mental health grants that are in the schools, we are working, I know there, we've gotten some mental health grants from the state that are, and we've implemented some partnerships with these, I believe it's Mercy, but I'm not, don't quote me on that. But we do have some more mental health professionals in the buildings. And I think, I'm hoping that that will help. Just in education, kids know what's wrong. They, they just don't always do what they should. They, they just don't always do what they should. Um, so I, I, just a general education on stop, just stop, stop it. Would be is, you know, if, and we're, it's not a Janesville unique problem, it's a national problem. So um, when someone finds the magic answer, that would be great. Um, but I, I think we're in the right direction as far as the po- phone policy in the district.
Thank you, Julie. Um, the next question is, what is the role of the school board in attracting and retaining quality educators? And we will start with Colton.
You said, what is the role of a school board member?
Yep, of the school board in attracting and retaining quality educators.
Um, I mean, continuing to better the benefits and whatever we can for our staff. Um, with what we have, that's the key thing is with what we have. Um, with constant prices going up, like insurance and things like that. Um, it, it's hard to give them what we want to give them. Believe us, we, we want to give them the best we can. But with funding being down and insurance prices through the roof, um, and what we're seeing at the state and federal level, it, it's hard to give them the best possible benefits and pay we can. Um, but uh, Julie mentioned this in our first debate. If I had a magic wand, we would. Um, but, you know, we, we can't. So we're doing the best we can. Um, and I would, you know, advise anybody just to take a deeper dive into that. With what we have, we are doing the best we can. Um, and we continue to just support our staff the best we can.
Thank you, Colton. Um, same question to you, Julie.
Um, I think one of the things, uh, in addition to tr- to just continuing to, to say that we are going to work on the benefits and figure out the best solution possible with what we have. I think that is a definite thing we, as a board member, you need to do. Um, the other thing is to encourage and foster a positive work environment for everybody. Teachers need to be heard, their opinions need to be taken into account. Um, they spend eight hours a day with our kids and they need to, they know those kids better. They know what they need more than anyone else. So I, positive work environment and making sure that they feel that, that their, their needs and their concerns are heard and addressed as best as possible by this, by the administration and by the school board. I think those are, um, and let everyone know that we're in the same boat paddling toward the same goal is, um, is very important. Um, and that's, that's a, uh. A vibes, as the kids would say, get, get the vibes good, better in the schools, you know, for the teachers is, is important. So, um, and one thing we can do, we can change, we can, we can improve that to make teachers feel seen and heard.
Thank you, Julie. Same question to you, Michelle.
Sure, so to get the vibe of the schools, um, Commissioner Paul and I visit a school a month and we have for two years. So we were asked to consider closing Tagos a couple of years ago in a board memo. Both of us were kind of texting and said, ha- have you, I don't even know a lot about Tagos. And so we agreed that we would go visit it together. So we got to go firsthand and see the students and, and talk to the staff. And then we just kept it up. Um, yes, we did end up closing Tagos that next month. But at least we could say we saw it and it was, it impacted us, but we still had to make that decision. But now we visit a school a month and we, so we get to talk to the principals and staff firsthand. They hear, what are any concerns that you might have? How are, how are things going? What do you need? We just most recently visited Jackson and we're doing Jefferson next. Um, so we do that and then we take direct feedback right to the superintendent. And I make sure that he follows up on it. Um, if you, I can't, don't think I can disclose it, but if you knew what we're dealing with with healthcare and the costs, especially with what Dean is doing, I mean, we are doing the best that we can. And we're trying to make the best decisions that we can with the limited funding we have, but it is not good. However, to keep our tail, our, um, our attractive retain our talent and our staffing, we have, uh, the benefits committee did do a health, a benefit advisory council and a committee. And JEAs on there and other representatives within the district are on there. So we're involving them, so to other people's points that have already been brought up, they are feeling heard and listened and they're involved. Um, JEA is an input. They are um, involved in the calendar setting and also meet with the administration once a month. So they should feel um, that, but again, I, you know, go, when you go to events, talk to the staff. And, and many of them I know just from my kids going there, so they'll just reach out if they have questions or concerns. So uh, I think we're doing what we can, but we also have to stay competitive with other districts near, nearby. I don't want to lose our top talent. I, I just don't necessarily care how long they've been here, but I want top talent.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, our next question. Is, what can the school board do to ensure that our children stay safe while they are at school? And we will start with Julie.
Um, I do know that with the operational, I'm sorry, the um, facilities referendum, you know, safety and security of the buildings is, is the best, i- is, is it an ongoing issue? I know that's been addressed recently and then some of the updates at the school buildings with the double locking doors and things like that. Um, we have resource officers in, um, I know for sure in the high schools. And I think we have some opportunities for resource officers in some of the other schools as well. Um, so those are things that as a board, we can, we can continue to do. Um, continue to monitor this, the, the, the trends and how things are the best security and safety measures that we can offer. Um, I would like to see possibly investigating um, communications between classrooms, class teachers and student and the administration in the building or the SRO officer or the police themselves for internal and external issues um, that happen at the schools. Um, I know that those walkie talkies are not always the most, um, they're kind of loud and invasive and, um, but guess what, those systems cost money. So I do know that um, there are systems out there that we could probably look into, but those are not cheap options. Um, everybody wants their family and children to be safe. Um, I, I wish I could make that happen for everyone everywhere. But the world we live in is where we need to um. Do the best we can with what we have. And um, again, the strengthening those mental health, um, uh, using those mental health grants that we received. Um, is another way we can work on that in the buildings um, as well, so.
Thank you. Um, Michelle, same question to you.
Sure, the last referendum, uh, we did, we're able to redo the entrances of all the schools. And so now there's dual, um, you know, dual entry and you have to be scanned in. Um, we are, we do have an SRO, a school resource officer at every middle school and high school. Then they rotate between the elementary schools. Um, comms have been improved, communication has been improved. And so there's, we've done um, improvements to make sure we have wifi in some corners maybe we didn't have, where the um, where the alarms and the, and the systems weren't able to reach, reach um, the, the power that they needed. And then also, um, we have the crime stopper's link so that they can kind of see something, say something, report something. And if there's a safety need. So I feel like we're, I feel secure sending my kids to Janesville schools. And um, I, I, and assure you, we've done what we can. And again, the administration did go visit another school. Uh, I think it was again towards Milwaukee and I can't remember where it was. But, you know, to find out a couple of other things that we could be doing that they'll be implementing. Of course, we're not going to disclose what they were because we don't, you know, want anybody to have access to maybe what we could improve upon there. But they're quickly implementing all of that too. So we're always learning and always getting better and conscious of safety is number one priority of our students.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, Colton, to you.
Um, so that, that school, I think they went to Nicolay.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I was at the board meeting that they had discussed that. And I think first, collaboration with other districts on anything is a, is a huge benefit to see what's working for them. Um, again, though, everything comes with a price. So we're doing the best we can with what we have. Um, the referendum, there's a big chunk that went to our secure entrances. I think we did a good job and I think we're going to continue to enhance the best we can. Um, continuing to prioritize their safety drills is a big thing. I know that it's like, oh, why do we got to do a fire drill? Oh, why do we have to do this lockdown? Well, there may be come a time where it's a serious steal and we need to be, make sure we all know what we're doing. Um, you know, we have many entrances at many of our schools, limiting those entrances potentially. Um, how, as far as like students coming through those entrances, limiting them down to one or two. Um, and then I guess for high school, they come in the morning, lunch and after school. Uh, the policy that I had when I was in high school, that we had to show our ID when we got back from lunch. I think that's a good idea, just to make sure that, you know, everyone's coming back that's supposed to be here. Um, but I know, you know, it sounds silly, but it's not. If you see something, say something, because you could prevent something horrible from happening by just saying something anonymously. You know, just, just say it and continue to take these drills and everything's, uh, seriously.
Thank you. Um, circling back to the topic of DEI. Um, so that's diversity, equity, inclusion. Some students um, of color have never had a teacher who reflects their, their race. And that, um, you know, representation in a classroom is very important. And so is being able to support students of color. What more can be done to support students of color in Janesville? And we will start with Michelle.
You know, this, this is the first time I've heard that, I'm being honest. Um. I, I will have to look into that. I, that is a, the first time I have heard that that is a scenario that happens in our district. So I know we've got a diverse staff as well. Um, we've got the multicultural committee and they're doing a lot of work to make sure that our, our, um, our staff it, um, is diverse. So um, I, I, let me look into that. I, I don't, I don't know. I know that there are programs and clubs that the students can be involved in at Craig to get more support. I, I'm assuming Parker has them as well. Um, so let me look, I'd have to look into that more, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, Colton, to you.
Um, I, I've never heard or actually seen of any issues in our district revolving around that. I think uh, between our staff and our student population, we're a diverse uh, district. I think that's great. Um, and I don't know, you know, as far as the details go to that question, I'm not really sure what else I can provide you with. Um, like Michelle said, I'll take a deeper dive into it um, and see if there's more information to go with that. But to, to the date, I have never heard of any issues or problems with that in our district.
Thank you, Colton. Uh, Julie, on to you.
Um, we do have a diverse population, student population, and I think diversity in our teaching staff is also important. Um, but I, I want, we want the teachers that are available, willing to live in Janesville, want to be a part of our community. So I, I, I would look at, you know, who's applying. I guess we could reach out to some more with like who we're hiring and, you know, to, to reach out more in that regard. I don't know what the policy is at the school district because I'm not on the board yet. So maybe we could, that's something we could look into. I don't know what I'm, I, I would assume that policy is already in existence, quite honestly. Um, but I, again, I don't. Diversity is but, is great for everyone. Um, so if, whatever we can do to make diversity across the board, you know, just part of our everyday um, operating. I think that's the way, that's the way to go. So hopefully, if it's not in existence, which I, I would guess it already is, we would do more. But I agree, I agree, there's multicultural clubs, there's um. Events at the um, high schools, at least for sure I know of. Um, I know different holiday, you know, different things are celebrated over the course of the year. Um, and taught. So I think, um, I think we are doing, we're doing some of that. We could, could we do more, maybe, probably? Um, and that's something we could look at. But I think diversity is a great thing for everybody and the more we have, the better.
Thank you. Um, we are going to move to our final question. And the question is, is there a topic we haven't covered tonight that you would like to address? And we will start with you, Colton.
Um, I guess one of the bigger things that we have uh, looked into is, I guess, every question we've had is revolving around the budget and insurance. Um, so the budget's a very complex thing. I, you know, I encourage everyone to stop just reading the headline of things that you see from the Gazette or on social media and just believing that and thinking that that's the case and not diving deeper into the story. Um, we are not intentionally um, change, sorry, that's my dog. Um, we are not intentionally trying to heighten the prices of insurance for our staff. We are not intentionally trying anything to, um, I guess offend or hurt our, our staff members in any way. Um, insurance went up over ten percent from last year. Uh, we budget for higher costs, but things went up significantly in everything. Um, so, you know, you, everyone in this country's seen a big hit on their pocketbook, on their electricity bill, everything. So I know that, you know, an electricity bill for you is going up, but so is the district's electricity bill. So it's everybody. So I encourage you to continue to support our district and not just read the headline and take that and run with it. Dive into the story or dive into the topic and, and, and really do some research on it before you jump to a conclusion.
Thank you, Colton. Um, Julie, to you.
Um, I think focusing on some of the things we're doing right in the district. We have a great graduation rate, we have a great, um, the scores are going in the right direction. Um, we do have um, a great um, higher activity rate. Children are getting more involved in, at least both at the high schools, there, we're having more kids in activities. We know that if kids are involved in more activities, they have better outcomes. It just teaches them more, they're, they're in a safe environment, we know where they're at, those are all good things. Um, so I think that those are positives to look at. Also, to Colton's point, the school district in Janesville is very, has been very fiscally responsible. And I, I want to continue to um, let people know that. Um, the school district paid off a, a loan recently in order to save the taxpayers from, I'm not saying the right term, but the loan, the, to save taxpayers from paying interest for years to come on a loan. Um, we are fiscally forward thinking. Um, we are, we have fiscal constraints, don't get me wrong there, and we will continue them. They might get a lot worse, but we are, we have, we are forward thinking in the budget. Um, a lot of that has to do things to the, to the finance team at the, at the school district and on the board. There, there's a group that does that. Um, we are taking care of our aging buildings. They're sixty-two year, years old is the average age of the buildings that we're managing. So that is, it's not all doom and gloom as far as the budget is concerned. The insurance is a nightmare, there's no better way to describe that. We personally experienced that at home as well. We are on the same insurance that the school district is on, and it's less than ideal at times. So I will tell you, um, that's, I don't know how we're going to change that, but I know that there are, there's also a group that's looking into what next, what, how can we make it better? Um, so I think, um, those are, let's look at a lot of the positives that are going on in our district. I think that's something that we should also focus on, not just what do we need to improve on.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, same question to you, Michelle.
Yeah, I would agree, exactly what Colton and Julie said. I don't feel like we've had an opportunity to talk about all the things to celebrate in the district. So, I mean, we've brought them up, but they haven't been asked. So, you know, craftsmen with character, youth apprenticeships are way up, we've almost doubled the involvement in those. Um, Parker Arts Academy is doing such great things, the Gazette did an article on that recently. Um, so the things that we're doing that are good in the district, I, I want people to realize that too. It isn't all, oh yeah, the report card, did you know we're this low in the, in the state? That, that's not good, and I'm not making excuses. Trust me, that's being addressed and that's the key focal, you know, focus of the administration. But please know that there's a lot to celebrate in this district. The kids are doing, and we've got incredible, I mean, DECA awards and people going to nationals. I mean, there are some great and talented students in this district. So please don't ever forget to celebrate all of that and the opportunities that this district gives our students. That's one thing I feel like wasn't brought up in the questions tonight.
Well, thank you all for that. And now it is time to move into closing statements. Um, Julie, we're going to start with you and each candidate will have two minutes for their closing statements. Julie, go ahead.
Um, just in closing, I want to say that I would be excited and honored to run and to be on the school board. Um, I, again, I'm, I'm a collaborative person. I think that I could work well with the district, the staff and the district that are at the school, on people that are on the school board already. Um, and I would be excited for the opportunity. Um, I believe that the school board should remain nonpartisan and I um, would work hard to keep it that way. Um, I am one of the only, I'm the only candidate that wasn't backed by a party or a party leaning um, group. So I do want to um, make sure that we keep the politics out of the school board and the school district because there's, kids are the priority. Um, so that's, that's um, essentially it. I would be honored to serve on the school board if elected. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Julie. Um, Michelle, your closing statement.
All right, thank you. You know, yeah, I, I would appreciate your vote on appropriations to get me into my fourth term. Um, I've been through a lot on the board, I know I can't please everybody. Um, I've been pre and post and during COVID, so those were some tumultuous times. I've been pre and post and during COVID, so those were some tumultuous times, but we do our best. And what I will commit to you is that I will continue to make sure student achievement is always first and foremost. I will visit a school a month at least, even though, even if it's a second and third time, that will never get old to me. And I work very, very full-time, and I still make time to go do that. And and also in this volunteer public office seat. I want to remind you again, so many things to celebrate in this district. Please reach out to any board member anytime you want, or you have a question. Thank you to the community for the referendum support and all the mentors and business leaders who take time to invest their time and resources to grow our students and give them all these opportunities. Be an involved parent. I would like to just, you know, our grandparent or guardian, whatever it is, please be involved. And that's what it's going to take to really move the needle with with your student. And thank you to the staff. We have so many gifted and caring staff members in our district that we are very, very fortunate to have. So I will also do whatever I can with being fiscally responsible to ensure that we are the most competitive district, and I want our district to be hungry always to make sure we have the best talent and we have the best opportunities for our kids. So again, do your research. This is a nonpartisan seat. It should be. It's school board. And it's unfortunate when some people try to play games with it, and so I ask for your vote on April first. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Colton, your closing statement, please.
First, thank you guys for putting this on, and thank you, Julie and Michelle, for being here. I think it shows a lot that us three are on here, we care enough. I want to continue to hold everybody accountable, from district leadership down to students. Continue to provide the great opportunities and programs our district provides. Continue to provide transparent answers and communication between our district leadership, students, staff, and our community. I believe we do a good job on that. Do your research when you're going to the polls. Look at what we have to say. It's the this election's critical, and you can decide the future for your your child in the Janesville School District on April first. I'm invested in this city. I'm invested in our school district. A successful school district is a successful community. Students are my number one priority above an agenda, anything. The students are what's center circle for us nine board members to what is best for them. I've been through it all. My freshman year of high school was COVID year. So I I I can provide a perspective that, you know, may be very beneficial on the school board. So again, you know, I would appreciate your vote on April first. Thanking the teachers is one thing I forgot to add before the April first comment. I'm a ref. I wouldn't even change that, my spot for a teacher. They have a thankless job, and I want to continue to support them. So I would appreciate your vote on April first. Thank you.
Thank you. As we wrap up tonight's candidate forum for the Janesville School Board, we would like to thank all the candidates for their participation in tonight's forum. We want to thank our audience for tuning in, and we want to give a special thanks to all of our wonderful volunteers and Alan Luckett and his professional staff at JATV for making tonight's forum possible. The League reminds all voters that the spring election is on Tuesday, April first. Early vote voting is going on now. Make your plan to vote and tell your friends about the importance of this election. Thank you for watching and good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.